Well, good evening again, everybody. We're going to reconvene the city council work session. It is Monday, August 29th, 5:30 PM. We still have four members of council with us. As I said earlier, Councilwoman Drago is absent this evening. It is approximately 6:50 PM, 5:50 PM, excuse me. Our order of business, our first item is the action plans slash campaign and educational material for the bond referendum, which we were just discussing. So, Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn it over to you for an introduction and tell us what you need from us.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. As you just conducted your public hearing for your referendum for the public safety improvements. In the past, when we've had these referendums, we've undertaken an educational campaign to educate the electorate on why we're doing the referendum. If you recall, back when we did the referendum for Oviedo on the Park, we'd engage the services of Wade Trimble to prepare educational materials. And I remember going to, they were distributed out to the city's population. I remember working with them at Taste of Oviedo, and we had a booth there, and we were working with Wade Trimble to present the why we are doing the referendum. We have been having discussions with a local company called RMA, and they specialize in this sort of activity. And they actually are performing a similar function for the city of Lauderdale right now. And so, we asked them to come here tonight and make a presentation regarding these type of educational campaigns. And what I'm going to ask you tonight is if you wish to us to undertake such an educational campaign for this referendum, and if you do, what we would recommend is that we engage them under, piggyback through the Lauderdale contract.
We did something like this with the sewer plant, too.
That was, I couldn't remember what we did. I can't get my hands on it.
We had a pamphlet and a call.
So, anyway, Ms. Lynn Dillinger is here. She is the director of the Winter Springs office of RMA. And we also have Ms. Sharon McCormick, who, I'm not sure what Sharon's title is, but I know she is the one that takes on these challenges. So, I want to turn it over to them and let them tell you about an educational program for this referendum.
Great. Give us the Reader's Digest version. We've got a lot of things on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I'm Lynn Dillinger, and I've lived in this community for the past 10 years. So, I'm very pleased to represent Redevelopment Management Associates, who has recently expanded into the central Florida market, and talk to you a little bit about our expertise in this type of undertaking, and why we feel like we are the company that can certainly deliver an educational program for the electorate that will be all encompassing. I'd like to tell you that we have three of our team members here tonight. Sarah Blake, who's our creative marketing person, and she's been very involved with some campaigns in other cities. And Sharon McCormick is our director of marketing, and we like to say that she sprinkles the fairy dust. So, if this presentation looks a little bit different than the one in your package, it's because when Sharon saw it, she decided it needed a little bit of an upgrade with the images. So, all of the data is exactly the same as in your package, but we did make this look a little bit better. We're very proud of our company and our company culture. We are a recognized leader throughout the state in providing economic development, public relations, business retention, and marketing programs for cities. We have been hired by the city of, I mean, excuse me, by Florida League. I know I saw some of you recently. I was at the Florida redevelopment meeting down there. I'm on the board of directors for that. Kevin Crowder, our economic development director, is on the board for Florida redevelopment. And Sharon just led the team at the events program awards ceremony, where RMA took 21 awards out of 60 for producing events throughout the state of Florida. So, I'm very proud of this company. I'm very proud of the values that this company represents. And those values are how we're going to be able to educate your citizens about this particular program. We believe very strongly in making the public aware and giving them very different avenues of understanding the program and how we're going to reach those. We're going to actually give you examples of a program that is underway and will be voted on tomorrow in Lauderdale. Understanding the public sector's role, our commitment to your project, and our communication to your city staff throughout this process is very, very important. We do work throughout the state of Florida. We're very proud of our expansion into central Florida and would like to continue to work with the city. Our institutional experience is very in-depth. That's in your package. We've done P3 partnerships. We've done campaigns for public relations, and we've done different marketing campaigns throughout the state that have been very well received. Our industry knowledge, I mentioned about some of the boards that we participate in, and we're very active, and we give back to the communities that we're involved in. So, that's just a very brief background of RMA, Redevelopment Management Associates. And now, we'll talk about the GO Bond, the General Obligation Bond, and how this public safety aspect is so important to educate your citizens about. And I'd like for Sharon to kind of talk with you about, and you're welcome to ask questions if you'd like, about how we go through this process and the different ways that we'll work with your city staff.
Thank you. So, yes, my name is Sharon McCormick, and I'm very delighted to be here. We do enjoy working in cities and enjoy seeing progress in redevelopment and economic development. So, this is just an opportunity to really dive in with you here, should you choose us to help you with this project. We have looked at your psychographics, and we understand your community. Lynn, having been here, of course, she has a really intimate understanding of the community as well as looking at the, like I said, the psychographic profile. So, you know, really reaching your community in the best way. I'm going to go over an example. I know we talked about that you've called this your hometown home place project, or referred to it like that, referred to the community. So, I think that's very catching. So, this is the proposed site plan. We understand where you're going to be proposing this project. And my next slides, I'm going to very quickly go through the examples of the Lauderdale General Obligation Bond, so you can see the types of things that we could work with your staff in order to bring to your community to understand why you're doing what you're doing and what the information is. So, this was just coming up originally with an image and a tagline, a kind of a logo and a tagline, telling people when to vote. We never tell people how to vote. We just give them the information and tell them when the vote is to remind them. In this instance, they produced, they did five town hall meetings. So, one of our direct, our very first direct mail piece went to the entire 21,000 households with voting households. So, we targeted to the voters and to advertise where these public meetings were where people could come and attend and ask questions. So, the other thing was a quad-fold brochure. This was also mailed to the households. It has a lot of information. It's not a beauty piece. It's a very, very informational piece that looks good as well, but has all of the details and the things that your citizens would want to know. In this particular instance, we did five different direct mail pieces. One side of the card was the same information, but they had so many projects in so many areas. So, this is just an example of customizing. So, we'd want to make sure that this type of information gets out into their mailboxes, potentially. 300 yard signs, 20 road signs, 50 T-shirts, and 1,000 stickers is what Lauderdale needed and wanted. So, everyone was involved, their parks and rec community, they were putting these out. So, there was no doubt that people in Lauderdale knew that this vote was coming up. And then, in these, their designer had done the rendering, so again, just so that they could, the people could visually see what things would look like, which is very important in these town hall meetings that the city held. Our Facebook campaign was quite impressive. You have a much stronger Facebook right now. You have over 3,000 fans on your Facebook page, but you have about 30, almost 38,000 people, 38,000 residents. So, in the Lauderdale, we went from, I believe it was 55 fans when they started the city's Facebook page. They have over 1,300 fans now. The total reach during this month campaign up about a week ago. This is not, you know, the latest information, a reach of 138,000 people. So, not only now are they educating the public about what's going on, they've now built a fan base, so there's some residual benefit to doing a campaign such as this. For this campaign, we did a 30-second video that we actually put on the Comcast. Comcast very targeted again, was only in the Lauderdale area and on Facebook and YouTube. There were over 21,000 views on a little 30-second video that really explained it as well visually, which our society today is very visual, of course. And a dedicated website, again, just featuring everything. People could go to the buildinglauderhill.com website, which is what we've included in your package here. I believe that your community would be very involved in wanting to get information through a website, and that's one way to really inform. We also did a weekly e-newsletter, giving people information about what was happening. And that was basically it for Lauderdale, kind of covering all the touchpoints of how we could reach people and tell them about the, theirs was a $44.5 million bond. And I'll take any questions if you have any questions.
Any questions, council? Councilwoman Schenk, nothing? Councilwoman Brady? Councilwoman Hagan?
That's exactly what we need. It's an easy one.
When would you start, and how would you do it?
Well, we would need to start as soon as possible, because we want a full 60 days to get started. And first, work with your staff to establish a plan and a budget associated with it, the hard costs that are associated with doing this, and have the entire plan written out in the next couple of weeks, you know, in the first two weeks. And then, we start launching the materials about one month out, get the website built. The sooner we get things up, the better it is, but you know, a four to six-week window is when we really like to start launching and getting information out.
And what do you envision the campaign looking like?
It really needs to match your brand for the city and the hometown home place, if that's sort of a tagline that you've selected, that we could play off of those words and really customize. The point is to customize it so that it's very specific to Oviedo and something that will resonate with the community here, the visuals and the value.
Can I ask you a quick question? You said you need, excuse me, Mayor. You have, you said you need 60 days to ramp up, so we have an election on November. There's not a lot of time for ramping up. You have to do this one quick.
No, yeah, it's like about two weeks to ramp up. And then, 45 days of launch. Yes.
So, you know, based on, and again, it's our Facebook page, you know, we use our, you know, a Facebook campaign, newsletter or two, maybe Time to Rise, Town Hall, getting on the S and T V slideshow. Add that to the slideshow on there.
Definitely.
I see that, you think that's doable, and in the timeframe, now we can get those things coordinated and done.
Yes, absolutely. Our Lauderdale was just shy of 60 days, and we dedicate staff and work really hard and get it done.
As far as the marketing campaign, I mean, it's great that you want to work off of maybe things that we've come up with, but obviously, if we do enter into a contract with you, I mean, we're leaning on your creativity to come up with something better.
Right. And that's what I, what actually, what I meant when I said that is to, to be within your-
Because actually, what you said is we should do it by ourselves, because we came up with this great tagline.
Oh, no. If you, if that's the tagline, then I would want to play off of that and work with your staff to creatively design something that also, you know, we are, our philosophy, too, is kind of like the Facebook thing. Let's create something that has some perpetuity, that can be, you know, edited and changed and actually have value to you, but beyond the 60 days.
Okay.
And we love designing, so that'll be no problem.
Remember, in the contract, they'll work that out with you. You'll bring that contract and then whatever it is for approval for us to approve the cost.
Our plan right now is to have it on your agenda for September 8th. That's our plan.
Oh, you got to hurry up?
Yes.
So, but we wanted to, we wanted to bring it to you tonight in the work session, just to determine whether or not you were interested in undertaking something like this. Obviously, if you weren't, then we wouldn't bring something forward, but if you were, we'll bring something forward to you.
Let me just ask the question. Everybody good?
Yes.
One, two, three, four.
Got it.
Done. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Item number two. Item number two is proposed budget adjustments. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you for a brief introduction, and then let's see what we got.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is our last work session before we begin our public hearings for the adoption of the fiscal year 2016-17 budget. In the, in respect of time, I think what I'm going to do is just go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Hayes and let her take you through. We have a few minor adjustments that need to be brought to your attention before we get to the public hearings. And the public hearings, of course, will be held on September the 8th and September the 19th. And do we need to pull these out, please? Okay. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hayes, and I'll let her walk you through these minor adjustments to get your input on.
Okay.
This was easier tonight than trying to do some of the boards.
That's okay. We like pie charts. Are these as attachments in the agenda as well?
Yes, sir. Attachments one and attachment two.
Okay. Which one should we work off of first?
Let's talk about attachment one first. In the memo, we talk about the fact that for the budget perspective, we actually went back and looked at nine months of revenue and expenditures, and what we've brought you tonight is those adjustments to the budget, to the 16-17 proposed budget. The communication service tax actually came into the city after our July 18th meeting. We actually had a reduction, so we had a decreased revenue of $124,000 this year. Well, when I called the state, the number of true accounts that, obviously, you know it's a FOI amount, that was reduced. When I spoke with them, they had several in Seminole County reduce. We were not the only one. And then, when I looked at several of the other counties, I also saw reductions. So, I don't think it was just a county. I believe the FOI amount changed a little bit. I have reached out through a letter to DOR, but I just haven't received anything back. So, I don't know why I should say even when I say letter.
Robin, if I can just bring up something about this, and we discussed this a couple or three years ago, just make sure that the state has all the, well, no, it wouldn't be the state, but I guess, yes, it would be the state, and then we'd have to go to the carriers. Let's make sure that all of the cell phone carriers are charging the proper tax rate for folks who live in the city who have service. You know, as I had mentioned up until recently, you know, I signed my Verizon service up in Altamonte, and that, too, is collecting my communications tax.
Right.
Up until, I guess, about two or three years ago, when we first brought this issue up.
You did. You mentioned it to me two years. I actually went back to look at the last meeting. And so, we did come forward from that, so we are still doing a little bit of research on that, so we'll bring that back to you, just as a resolution to the research on that and check to see how many accounts and so forth. Like I said, we also saw in several of the other cities, so we were not the only city to see the reduction. So, that's the reason, kind of, I believe it's a little bit more of a FOI driven, but we will finish that up.
Well, Councilman Hagan just mentioned, you know, a lot of folks are cutting the cord, too, so.
They are, yes. And if you, you know, if you cut out your, even your home phone, again, there's a communication service tax to it, so.
Yeah.
So, we have reduction in the service tax, but we also had some adjustments to some other ones to offset that. We adjusted the, the main one we adjusted is the PDCS, as I wrote a little comment in there. We looked at the building permits, as we looked at earlier in the year when we prepared the budget for you initially. We went back and we looked at it. We actually are seeing some growth there in our building, so positive signs for next year, so we adjusted that to more reflect that. And so, we've adjusted that revenue, adjusted the quality control revenues, again, an offset from the building and some of the funds that are held into an account until a developer actually finishes building, then those are released. So, we actually have some revenues there we're going to capture and bring to you and reflect the total amount of the budget. And again, keep in mind that this 112,000 is a much greater number. That's at 28% from the city's perspective. PDCS, we'll see, is 72%. Side of that, in which I gave you a little bit of information in the memo, that we actually increased it by 400,000. The offset to us was 112,000. Okay. And then, we, of course, we offset the expenses when we did the revenues. The big thing here is we added some funding to tuition. We actually, as you know, the policy, city policy actually offers educational benefit as a benefit to our employees, and we actually had several employees put in some last-minute requests to educational adjustments or reimbursement, so we actually added that to the budget. It is something we offer them. We also offered, or we actually put it to the budget, we had a CIP, I know if you looked in the CIP, in out years, we had the cameras, the cameras for the police officers, the body cameras, and a software retention. They have to maintain, obviously, the video that's, you know, that's taken, and then they have to store. So, the chief had a program in there for that, so we have funded that now. You see here, we did assurance plan, 46,000, and then 23,000 here for the body cameras. So, that was in a CIP for out years. We moved that into this year, so there are police are taken care of. And we had some other whole taking of adjustments, some adjustments to the PIO position that you funded. We actually increased it based on the market by another 13,000 in order to bring that position back to you later this year for a possible hire. But we were looking at the current value of that, and we were undermarket a little bit, so we increased that now so that we don't delay hiring the position. And then, we added to your contingency account, $163,000.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead. No. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. The other thing that I mentioned in the memo, I talked about stormwater, just to remind you that we had some reductions. It's all that is. We adjusted some CIP items and adjusted some equipment in which we normally do a week ago. We're going to do this as a lease because there are large pieces of equipment, and the companies that we can purchase them from or lease them from offer lease programs. So, we're actually going to go with a lease program on a tractor that the enterprise funds has wished to purchase, there has wished to desire to purchase. So, that's the only change to stormwater fund. We actually awarded the landscape maintenance contract, as you'll see some adjustments here. Also, to the general fund, we picked up $33,000 contract asset here, contractual services. General fund picked up $33,000 because it was that, you know, compared to last year, we stayed $33,000 with Mr. White and them going out for an RFP and releasing the RFD, so that's a benefit to next year budget. And then, the second attachment here, attachment two, is the budget that we'll post in the newspaper, probably around the 15th of September. It's our budget app. This is required. This is state statute. This is not something that we create. All the ones you see from all cities will look very similar. They might be a little different, might be fun, because they may not have a CRA or whatever it might be. We have to save the ALORM, which is 5.0566. The ALORM voted that, which is 0.2254, which is a total 5.280, what, 2820, excuse me, which is the same military rate that we have this year in total. We say what each fund value is, what we budgeted, whether it's expenditures, revenues, they balance, so it's the same value in that sense. And then, we just spread it, show you, too, that our net operating is $61,300,000. Last year, we were about $60,400,000, $60,500,000. So, we increased a little bit this past year, or this year going now, excuse me. And then, we give you the breakdown per fund, so that you can see what we're spending in enterprise fund, each, you know, it's general fund. General fund last year was about $28,000,000, this year's $29,000,000. So, but this will be the ad that we've sent out, as well as a notice of tax increase, which reflects a 5.18% increase. And that's just simply because in total, when you look at our, even though our military stays the same, the assessed values change and so forth. So, the ALORM in total appears in the sense of a tax increase, but there's no military increase. So, that's what we're going to go with in that information.
Any questions? Nope.
Okay. Staff typically, as part of the budget process, we look at as attachment three. We look at all the proposed fee schedules, the current fees and fees that we may need to update, maybe need to add, maybe need to clarify or define. So, we've included in your package a red line copy, so that you see something that looks like this here, where you see that we may have changed in the first one. The CD was an actual cost, and if I drop it, actual costs were in past, we may have had a fixed cost. And you'll see other red lines in this document. And we definitely would encourage and entertain any questions you might have in reference to the document, anything you'd like to see added or deleted, or anything you'd like to see for, see that you have us go back and investigate and bring back to you any changes of the document.
Good. Anybody have anything right now? We could always bring it up during the hearing.
Those are changes. They could be additions or deletions if it's a strike through, you know. There's some that we're clarifying, maybe it's a per hour versus a flat fee. So, it's just, it varies, as you remember, Britain, so there's different ones. There's only a few that are, that we have actually, you know, have a strike through on that we've deleted, and in those cases, you'll probably see something before that in which we rolled all the costs into one standard cost and said, okay, this is going to be a cost, you know, so.
Is there a large demand for valet parking for this?
That's something that we're planning ahead for. We're working on that right now. There's something that'll be coming to you soon regarding valet parking.
But you also notice there are different charges in here for like Oviedo on the Parks and things that have been brought to us that we have included in this proposal.
Hi.
Attachment three.
No, the paddle boats. Why aren't they just $5 a gone boat? What is this per-person stuff? I mean, can you go back and look at that? Just keep it, keep it at $5 a boat? Jeez. Why, why, come on. That's silly.
Okay. As you can see just above that, Mayor, there was a nonprofit in there that we've added that in there, so there's new ones in there in the document.
Yeah, I see it.
So, again, this will be the last time I should bring it to a work session, but we will bring this schedule to the September 19th meeting, and up until then, we can obviously make changes and then present the changes at that meeting if you so desire.
Okay. Attachment four. Oh, wait, excuse me. Anybody have anything else? Council?
Then, attachment four, we have just a couple of policy changes this year, and they really are related. We brought the communication guidelines, the business and rules, where we actually put in there about the four days, specified the number of days Wednesday before a meeting, before a Monday night meeting, to present account to city clerk, the F M driver, or that type of information, so we can actually see and make sure everything's okay. And then, the last one was the prayer, which we brought to you again back in July to let you be aware of the changes and presented you that, or policy, excuse me, in reference to the rest of the legislative prayer before city council, and that was just cleaning up some of the directives that we were given earlier in the year.
Okay.
So, we just cleaned up all of our policies, SOPs at this point, fine.
Any questions? Good. What do you need from us tonight, Robin?
That's it, sir. I will bring to you on September the 8th, the budget. Like we agreed to, let me incorporate these into the budget, to the 16-17 budget, but other than that, that's.
Will you hear this September?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But if you're okay with me incorporating these into the 16-17 budget, we'll bring that to you with the total budget on the 8th, and then again on adoption for the 19th.
Yes. I do have one question for you, and it's something that Mr. Hagan and I spoke about a couple of times in this regarding establishing an out-of-county fee. We want to, right now, our fees are resident, non-resident, and do we want to establish a third non-resident, non-Seminole County fee, something that with all the growth that's happening around us that's outside of Seminole County that could have an impact on our recreation programs primarily? And so, I wanted to ask you tonight, do we want to expand this and create this third category that's a non-county thing? I just wanted to bounce that off of you there, see if that's something we can investigate.
When you go out to the boss, like, you know, it's like, I don't know, I don't
When you go out to parks, like, you know, I don't know, Jettie Park comes to mind. When you go out there, what county are you? Seminole, you could pay ten dollars. If you in Bravard, or whatever, you pay five. You know, something like that. You know, I think you do. You know, a city, a Seminole county, and an out-of-county fee.
Well, in my opinion, anything just have to put your eye on the city you're in, you can be out of county too. I would suspect that those subsidies over Bravard are subsidized somehow by county commission. So be the break for being a resident, they budget it.
I think so.
I'd like to see what it looks like.
I can see too. But, you know, if it, if it looks like it's going to be a problem of having, I'll say I'm more concerned capacity wise than, you know, have, you can have sign-up days, you know.
Four cities.
Receives residents on the first, and open it up, things like that. I really don't care whether it's county outside of county, unless it becomes a huge problem. But I really care more about capacity instead of, if there's swimming license, being the one that usually is capacity kind of issues, then we either restrict that program to, you know, residents, or residents have five days of sign-up, and then after that, it's all about two things like that. Those is seven or three years, which is a little more cumbersome. Again, I think the capacity is more, if somebody else wants to come and bed, then they can come and bed. I want to make sure that it's present in residence, really have an opportunity.
Which I think that's our standard practice right now.
I know most of them have, sure, you know, timeframes are early, you know, babies, whatever, it's paper or some that don't have that already because they're not a capacity issues. But, you know, that, that to me would be the first jump is making sure that changes in that kind of thing.
Well, the thought process could change if four thousand homes are at our doorstep, though.
Oh, yeah, I don't disagree. But I think that's a little wild to add that in. Again, I think there's building on our own this right now. You know, again, it's going to hit capacity issues, whether it's Warner Springs, Geneva.
Well, that is true.
So I think capacity issues already there at some certain spots, and making sure that at least a lot of the capacity.
You want to, you want to ensure, as we generally do, that city residents have first crack at everything.
And again, that doesn't become a problem there. However, because they're not all, because it wasn't, there weren't those spots, and fifty-seven spots are taken by people outside of Seminole because they're all signing up the same day or something.
All right. Looks like we.
Sounds the same. Sounds the same.
So we can, I guess, if I'm hearing correctly, maybe not this year, but keep tabs on the growth in Orange County below us, and for that time, bring it forward.
Yeah, I got to keep the number. I'm sure you keep track, you know, I can keep track of those times. My buddy, okay, that's.
But always ensure that city residents come first.
Residents go first.
Evita proper, I mean, they pay for these facilities and, you know.
And that's something that, I mean, that's procedural. We can take care of that without, you know, getting, hitting the fee, fee structure on that. So, okay, thank you.
So, Robin, when is your big day?
My last day is October twenty-first, September twenty-first, excuse me, I apologize. My first day over in Mount Dora is September twenty-sixth.
Oh, good luck, Dean. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
For those of you who do not know, Ms. Hayes was chosen as the next city manager of Mount Dora. So give her a round of applause. She's, she's done a great job here in the city, and we haven't quite let her go yet, so.
No, I'll be through the budget process. So, thank you.
No, I meant on September twenty-first. I'm not done working you over yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, Brian, number three, Siemens Industry Energy Savings Performance Contract.
All right, thank you, Mary. This is a request for the council to give direction on the Siemens Performance Assurance Program. Representatives from Siemens are here tonight. As you know, back in two thousand and ten, we engaged Siemens for an energy savings performance contract. And they've made, over the years, have made several improvements, energy-related improvements to the city facilities. And they are finished. And so now it's time to determine if we want to move into the next phase of the program. And so I'm going to turn it over to them and let them explain to you where we are currently, and then what's the next step. And then we'll ask for direction on whether or not we want us to go into this maintenance side of the program. So I'll turn it over to them.
Before you start, gentlemen, just one second. Brian, I think I'd like to hear you answer that question first. Personally, what is, what is the staff's perspective? I mean, because if staff doesn't think they've done the job, then there's no reason for us to listen to the presentation.
My belief is, is that we should go forward with the second step. The reason being is that we're going to be able to look at that. It's going to provide us with a maintenance. And that's one of the things that I've been talking about with all of you. One of my biggest concerns is about the maintenance. And so it's going to, we'll get that maintenance program installed by going through this program. And so I think it is important for us to continue the relationship and move forward with them. Now, one of the things, part of the presentation we want to talk about is, at what level do we go forward? There are various levels that we can go forward with the program. But I do believe, yes, we should continue with the program because it takes us into that, that maintenance. And it will be a organized maintenance program that we will be a part of. It's from, and we will experience the, continue to experience the energy savings.
Have we, I saw in the documents, but let me ask the question publicly. I mean, we've quantified the savings that were promised over the years?
Yes, sir. And actually, I believe, if I remember correctly, let me see if I can find the number. We actually exceeded the goal. The goal in the contract was six hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. We actually had a savings of seven hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. So we actually increased, or exceeded the goal by eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars.
That's how much you saved in one year?
Yes. So.
One year or over the course of the contract?
It's, that was. First year, January.
Is that, you bet it in terms of dollars, or is that in kilowatts, or how did you?
I think that as well. It's in, it's in kilowatts as well.
It's a combination of kilowatts and increased revenue based off of the improved accuracy of the water meters that we put in. So it's a combination of different units.
Or efficiency of the preparation of water.
And I think there are, as you mentioned, Councilman, I believe there has also been a kilowatt savings from the.
Yes, there has been. All right, great. Well, thank you for that, Brian. And hearing that, do we want to proceed with the presentation?
Yes.
Do you want to ask it now before they begin?
Well, I'm curious about the geothermal. I know that was supposed to be a large savings in COVID. So have you offset the COVID costs?
We have, and we'll get to those numbers in the presentation.
Great, great. Anything else, Councilman?
I just have, I got one question before you start. You probably have it in there. The, the maintenance, now that you've done all the upgrades and everything is working good, and, you know, that's pretty tremendous savings in one year, seven hundred and five thousand that we would be paying out. But the, the annual payment that we would do for the maintenance, can you, when you're doing your presentation, can you tell us in detail what that's going to include?
Absolutely. That's part of the presentation.
Okay. Terrific. Watch on. Sorry.
No, thank you. First of all, just by quick way of introduction, my name's Brian Riordan. I am the city's infrastructure executive with Siemens. And with me tonight is Chaz Gregman. He is our performance assurance engineer. And so a lot of the tracking of the savings, the verification that everything's operated correctly since the completion of construction has been Chaz's responsibility. And so he'll be presenting some of the information. But this was kind of referenced by a couple of comments earlier, that this project did not necessarily implement in the smoothest of fashion, certainly not the way that we normally anticipate these projects to roll out. And so before we got in, get into the post-construction phase, we wanted to take a half step back and spend just a couple minutes to talk about background, both of the initial project, as well as discuss some of the issues and challenges that we had during implementation, how that leads to where we are now. From a standpoint, when we started this project, the objective was for us to work with the city to identify projects that we could implement that would help modernize your facilities and your utility infrastructure. And that the savings, or in the case of the water meters, increased revenues through improved accuracy of your system, would more than pay for the cost of those improvements. And kind of key aspects of the project, that we entered into the contract in May of two thousand and ten, and it was a three-point-six million dollar project. It was financed over a ten-year term. And during that period of time, that we guaranteed energy and operational savings of one point, almost, excuse me, almost eight point two million dollars. And so that savings both covers the cost of paying off the cost of the project over that period of time, but also has some amount of positive cash flow that's going back into the city's general fund for you to be, or enterprise fund on the utility side to be used for other, other needs within the, within the city. The project itself included a wide range of what we call PHMS, or Facility Improvement Measures, that range from lighting and controls improvements in your buildings, HVAC improvements in the buildings, without, throughout the city, putting in variable frequency drives at the pumps at your pools, the geothermal unit, and that's one that we'll talk about in a little bit more detail shortly, meter replacements, and moving to an automatic meter reading system for the meters throughout the city, and a pool ionization system at the aquatic center and pool. During construction, as we've already referenced, the, not all aspects of this construction went as smoothly as we would hope. Certainly, all construction projects have their certain amount of changes or adjustments that have to be made during implementation. But then we had some above and beyond what we would normally anticipate. And so during the course of the project, we had an amendment that is pretty typical, which is, within a project like this, as we're rolling out the project, we may find that some of the meter inventories were a little bit different than what we had in our audit. And so we had to ship meter inventories. We also ran into an issue where, for code issues, some of the meter boxes needed to be moved, and that the level of the meters needed to be raised or lowered a little bit for code purposes. And so we took care of those things as part of our, part of our project. Those are kind of typical issues that you run into from a construction period, and we had an amendment for that. There was a second amendment that we had to remove the pool ionization system that we put in. Put the system in, that there were some challenges where that ionization system was causing damage to some of the equipment in the pool, taking the finishes off the ladders. We were concerned about the finish of the, of the pool itself, from that standpoint. So we removed that system, and worked with Drew and his team to identify some additional controls upgrades that needed to be done at the city hall annex. And if we did that work in trade for the ionization project that we removed, from that standpoint. So we recovered the cost of removing that system, and then did work equivalent to what the value of that ionization system was to generate new, or replacement savings for the city, as well as replacement scope for the city that benefited there. And then, lastly, the geothermal system that we installed, that we had some challenges with getting it to perform at the level that we needed to. And so when we talk about the delay and the completion of the project, one of the things that's important to understand is that ninety percent of the scope of the project was done on time, with how we would have expected it to be, that we had this one item of scope that we had to continue to work with, where engineers had to spend a good bit of time making sure that we were tweaking, making adjustments, and getting that system performing the way that we had guaranteed that it was going to perform in, in the contract. And we certainly, from our end, cannot extend a larger level of appreciation to Drew and his staff for working with us through that process, giving us constant feedback and information on what was going on, so that we could try to resolve the problem as quickly as possible. And quite frankly, there were a lot of patience, both at the, at the leadership level, but also at the staff level, as we worked through those issues and tried to get them resolved. And so during that delay of construction, one of the benefits that you guys had, although one that we've preferred that you not have had, was that all of the rest of the equipment that we put in were generating savings that the city was benefiting for, yet our guarantee period had not kicked in yet because of the fact that we had not finished final construction of the project. And so the city actually received several years of, for lack of a better word, free savings benefit because of our inability to close out this one item on the project before we moved into the guarantee period, which basically extended our guarantee of performance for this equipment for several years longer than what we had intended on guaranteeing the performance for the equipment. And so long-term, there is a little bit of return from that patience that the city will receive because of the fact that we're guaranteeing the performance of the equipment for a longer period of time than we would have otherwise. Now, the, the construction was finally approved and signed off by the city at the end of two thousand and fourteen. So January two thousand and fifteen through the end of, basically, two thousand and fifteen was your first year of performance or performance assurance of the, of the project. And that's the next step of the project that we've talked about, or that was referenced by the city manager that we're moving into. And so first is, what is performance assurance, and why do we have this apart, as part of the project? And in simplest terms, because we've guaranteed the savings of this project to pay off the cost of the project, this is the process by which you know that you saved what we said you were going to save. And that more importantly, if for some reason you have not saved that, Siemens has to write a check for that shortfall to the city hole in that process. And so first and foremost, the performance assurance process is the system by which that we work with your staff to review and check the performance of the equipment, make sure that it's operating the way that it should. If it's not, for some reason, working jointly with your staff to get everything in line, so that we're getting that, that performance. But if we're not, for whatever reason, that it's the guarantee there that we're going to write that check back to you guys, so that you're being held whole off of the cash flows that were looked at or viewed within the contract, that was the economic performance that you guys were signing off for when you approved the project several years ago. Additionally, beyond that, and Chaz will talk about this a little bit more in a little, in a little bit, but as part of that M and D process, when we're out here looking at your equipment, we often uncover opportunities or ideas or things where you can adjust what you're doing operationally a little bit and drive even more savings out of the project. And so what we're not trying to do is just go out there and say, yep, we've monitored it, it's doing what it should be, but we're looking for continuous opportunities for improvement. I think there's a commercial out there right now where the guy goes into the dentist, and he goes, well, I'm not a dentist, I'm just a dentist monitor. And so I'll tell you, you've got a terrible problem, but you got to go find somebody else to help you with it. This is more the monitoring, we're actually helping identify those problems and putting together solutions if there are opportunities to change in your operations to tweak more on the savings. From a process standpoint, we actually started the M and D activities before we ever started the contract, because we had to establish the baseline as to what your old systems were consuming, because that's what we're measuring savings against. And so before we ever started the project, we did pre-measurements, we established baselines that were included in the investment grade audit report that was part of the contract that we signed, and we established the formulas that we were going to use to calculate the savings by post-project. So all of that was done and established before we ever turned the first wrench in the project, so that everybody had an understanding how we could verify these things moving forward. That it wasn't a moving target that we came up with after the fact these things were established in the initial contract. Since the contract, since the construction, we've gone out and taken post-measurements to monitor how the equipment is performing, the new equipment we put in, that we've provided, or often do an implementation period savings report, and we'll talk about those numbers a little bit. And for you, that implementation savings period was a longer period than we would normally anticipate, because we had this period of time where ninety percent of the project was implemented. This one piece was still being tweaked up and worked on. And so we had a very extended implementation period, savings period, within the, within the project. But the bulk of the savings that you were getting during that time was that benefit of the increased revenues from those water meters that got put in early on in the project, while we were still working on tweaking that HVAC part of the project. And now we're at this point where we've done ongoing monitoring of these systems for And now we're at this point where we've done ongoing monitoring of these systems for a little over a year now, and we're providing the report from the first year of that savings that we provided several months ago to Drew and his staff, and now we're at a point where we're ready to sit down and present this to you, to the staff. From a protocol standpoint, measurement verification, and we talked about in the project, these things were established as part of the contract, but we use a process for measurement and verification that isn't the "you saved it because Siemens told you so" protocol, but it's actually a protocol by the International Measurement and Verification Engineering Association. And so this is an international group of engineers, independent standards that are set up for measuring performance on anything and everything that you could imagine potentially needing to measure performance for. We're simply using that for measuring performance of our project. And under that, there's several options that you can choose in terms of how you measure those things. And they range anywhere from option A and B, which is where we actually put a meter on the thing that we changed, both before and after we changed it, all the way to looking at a whole system, where we look at a utility bill and look at the impact to the overall utility bill on the system. And which options we use kind of depends on what work we did within the project, and depends on how much we want to spend on measurement and verification, and how important it is that we're accurate on measurement and verification. We could put a sub-meter in on every tiny piece of equipment that we installed if we wanted to, but to put in a $100 sub-meter to monitor $5 of energy savings doesn't necessarily make sense. And so we work with your staff to identify the right options to use based off of the different things that were done within the project. One of the questions was, what all was included in those services? And so from a line item standpoint, you can kind of think of these as two areas. One is the performance testing, so this is actually where we're out in the field, specifically Chaz, going out in the field and inspecting the equipment that we install. And so we're visiting the sites, we're collecting data from the site visits for your water meters, we're actually removing a statistical sample of those water meters and sending them out to be bench tested, to make sure that they're maintaining the accuracy that we had guaranteed from the system. We're downloading trend data from your control systems. It was actually referenced earlier in the meeting tonight about the Siemens systems that were installed, and the systems that were installed here in the building at City Hall to make sure it's running efficiently. We come into the end of the systems that were installed, and we pull down trend data to see when were the showers running, when were they not running, or are they operating on the schedules and sequences of operation that they were supposed to do. And if they're not, then we're going to work with your staff to get those adjusted back to where they need to be, to make sure that the system's working correctly, and that's tied into that maintenance issue that Brian had mentioned. We're verifying that all of that equipment is still in place, it's operating correctly, that nothing's been changed in the settings, it's been maintained correctly, and if you look through the site visit reports and the M&amp;D reports, you'll find where we sometimes identify little recommendations around the systems, or in the case of the geothermal system, we determined that the change in the supply water temperature and the return water temperature was not as great as it needed to be to get a good heat transfer to effectively dehumidify the system. So we worked with your team to get that reset, to make sure that we were getting the right dehumidification. So it's a second or third set of eyes out there, making sure that the supplement is operating, and it's a tight partnership. You guys want the benefit of the equipment working the right way, we have a pretty high financial liability to make sure it's working the right way, or else we're going to have to pay for that shortfall for energy savings. And so it's a good partnership where we both have good skin in the game to make sure that these systems run the way that should. And finally, the general inspection and verification of equipment, we look for any other things that we may be able to do to kind of help with the system. A lot of these are no-cost or low-cost things that your staff implements themselves, so this isn't a Siemens coming back and saying, hey, we can sell you another service, or we can sell you another project, although sometimes they fall in that. A lot of this, the majority of the stuff, are small things that your staff can do on their own, if we simply kind of point out and provide the recommendations. The second part is the measurement verification and the reports that we provide. And so this is where we now take that data that we gathered out in the field, and we compare that to the baseline data. We plug those into the formulas, we do the math, was the savings there that we guaranteed or not? And in the first year, the savings was there, so that's exciting, everybody's happy. If the savings are not there, then we're going to write a check for that shortfall, and we're going to send our crew back out there to figure out why not, and start correcting those issues, so that the next year, I'm not having to sit here and give you guys another check, I would rather tell you that we've corrected the problem. And I report that, again, we're going to provide those recommendations, anything we found to kind of overdrive or find additional levels of savings. Within the contract itself, that we have a pricing schedule for this performance assurance contract, it is an annual renewable contract, but we do set that pricing schedule in the initial contract for the project, and we do that for a couple of reasons. First of all, the, by statute, the total cost of doing this project, including the cost of the measurement and verification, has to be covered by the savings that we're guaranteeing. And so we have to establish and guarantee what the cost of these services are going to be for that 10-year period of time, so that we make sure that there's more than enough savings to also cover the cost of this M&amp;D, or the performance assurance, not just the cost to pay off the loan for the project. Then, lots of times I get a question in a meeting like this, well, why wasn't this just part of the project cost upfront? If this is, you know, part of the project and part of what you're doing. Well, Florida statute requires that you cannot pay for something until you've received what it is that you're paying for. And so if we had built this into the project cost, you would have been paying for certain services that you might not be receiving for up to 10 years. And so from that standpoint, we have to lay it out over time. And then the last aspect, which is something that we'll get into shortly, is that sometimes through the course of the arrangement, we may decide that you want to tweak this a little bit. So having it annual renewable allows the city the opportunity to sit down and renegotiate or adjust the performance assurance program that we have with the city, if you want to do something different than what we currently have in there. And so we will talk about those options a little bit at a high level at the closing of the presentation. From a performance-to-date standpoint, construction savings period of time, so again, this was the savings during the time that we were trying to finalize construction, for an estimated $2.2 million. Now, again, the vast majority of that came from the increased revenues in water meters, and it is an embarrassing statement in terms of how long it took to finalize the project, if there was enough time to rack up that much savings within the project. But the first year one of guaranteed savings under the performance assurance ran from January of 2015 through the end of 2015, and that during that period of time, we were guaranteeing $624,000, and it was already referenced, that we exceeded that by almost $82,000 from a guarantee standpoint. One of the things that's important to note is any excess savings fully belongs to the city. This is not a program where we, you know, split excess savings, and all of that remains in your general fund. Anything to the good is to the benefit of the city from that standpoint. In terms of breakdown on the individual items within the project, what you will see through the system here is that across the board, and everything other than pool VFDs, we exceeded the savings that we guaranteed. The pool VFDs actually are not saving as much as we've guaranteed in the project. Fortunately, we've got enough overall savings to offset that slight negative. The reason why those are underperforming is that we found when we put the VFDs in and set them the way we had designed them, we set in, that we weren't necessarily achieving enough turnover and flow through the pool to maintain at the code requirements for what were there. That it was close, that we believed that it was hitting the codes, but that's one of those things you don't want to be close to, you want to make sure that you guys are far exceeding those code requirements for safety reasons for the pool. And so we went back and voluntarily adjusted and worked with those VFT levels and within the conversations with the staff there at the pools, to make sure that we were far exceeding any of the code requirements around the turnovers and the pumping amount of water being circulated through the pool, so that we had no issues there, even though we knew that was going to sacrifice some of the savings that we were guaranteeing. And fortunately, across the board, the project is functioning well enough that that's not lending itself to us having to write a check for that shortfall, but if we ever got to the point where that was the case, then we would be writing that check. From a next step standpoint, before we go into kind of the next steps, are there any questions or comments from?
Any questions, Counsel?
No.
I was going to add last time.
Oh, is it not? Then I will make sure that we get a, I'll make sure that we get that distributed to everybody if that was not in the, if I'm showing up.
Page is blank. Page is blank. That's all right, we were able to see it enough on both of us.
Okay, well, I'll work with Maureen to make sure that you guys have a copy of that table.
Bottom line's the bottom line. You're right about it.
The full performance assurance M&amp;D report that we provided has that same table in there, and I know that there should be copies of that that we provided to Drew, and we can provide extra copies if we need to from that standpoint.
When it got converted, it might have disappeared.
Yeah, sometimes PowerPoints can be a funny thing from that standpoint. In terms of next steps, we've, the first thing is, not uncommon with these projects, that M&amp;D cost that we've got, where it's an ongoing cost that has to be budgeted for a number of years, that kind of gets slipped through the process, and so we're not staying, I believe that there's a several questions coming from staff to approve budget for that year one report that we provided from that standpoint, so that we can make that, get that taken care of in the city for that four. But looking forward beyond that, you know, we've got some options. One is, we can use status quo, we've got a contract set up to be fully obtained, has a measurement performance assurance program that runs through the guarantee term, through the time that you guys have fully paid off, but we're also required to make sure that each and every year that we're right there with you, the guarantee that that saves the shortfall for a check there. We could restructure that existing program, that we could restructure it now, we could restructure it a few years from now, from that standpoint. If you said the design, in terms of restructuring the report, that we could look at and review the methodologies that we're doing for the M&amp;D investment. And so some of the items that we're looking at, such as light, where we're going to do the measurement on lighting, lighting's a pretty safe measure, that the draw consumption of the light bulb, pretty much as we do this in back of the time, will decrease. And the most incredible of all is that first time we measured it, when we did the first pre-measurements after the pathway. And so there's some things around that, there's some things for some of the site visits that we can kind of offer with the city, if the city wants to look at perhaps saving a little bit of that in the model. What we typically see with customer services, the first couple of years, they're in hand and status quo, and as we see how the performance is trending, we will potentially make adjustments. If there's the belief that maybe full value, it's already been recognized from a lot of the vendors of the program, but ultimately that's for first wish to the city, and certainly we will recommend you even listen to your loss and recommendations to staff on that from that standpoint. If we're making adjustments there, that's money you plan on spending against the project, and so potentially that money could be freed up to then investors, other savings opportunities that we're talking to Drew and his staff, you know, that there's some controls improvements that could be done in the annex to drive additional savings, and we're leaving some money out of the M&amp;D budget, which is one way we can pay for those things to drive. And that doesn't mean doing away with the M&amp;D, except for the restructuring, some of the ways that we provide the courts and those types of things for your support. We've done, look at, in the A, in terms of how that could look, but it's something that we call that, it's fairly high level. Lastly, off of that, while we're looking at these things, that there could be potential for a larger scope of work, Drew's identified some small tweaks that could be done with my redirecting some of the money that's been budgeted for the next 10 years for the M&amp;D to do the order, but we can also longer scope out and look at a larger scope of opportunities in a lot of the areas that we've touched on during the original project, that new technologies will allow us to further expand the benefits that we could receive by adding on to what we started, started years ago. We've not done a detailed analysis or look at that, no possibility we'd be commissioned to let staff to work it out with us, to the value of whether or not there's a potential for a project. One of the items that, how we're working on, whether it's part of looking at phase two, or just simply working with your internal finance people, which we're doing this project being ready for the meeting tonight, is that we took out, the city took out for this project, was financing about 4.1%, 4.01% business. Right now, projects that we're financing with the cities, and the cities that don't have, and they're already sort of credit standpoint, as you guys have, are getting financing close to 3% to 2% interest rates for those who are working on. Very likely after refinancing the deal, you could say the city a fair amount of money from that standpoint, if you're at yourself, and if you're running cash flows, use that additional savings to help support other project initiatives, and you have a lot of options as to what to do with that. But if we were to look at, from a Siemens perspective, who we could look at is to refinance and borrow part of the capital for you guys, but even if you did not want to, look at future opportunities, Siemens, I would recommend that we sit down with my future advisors and explore that.
All right.
What was our hold on that? The loan amount was about $3.7, $3.5, $3.6 million, I have to go back and follow the actual loan out.
Mr. Cobb, what are you looking for in this for tonight? Because, I mean, the presentation was quite detailed, but it doesn't seem to me like there's anything here for us to decide on yet, because staff hasn't analyzed it, brought it to us.
I think the big thing tonight was where we want to catch up today and where we are. And then two, are you comfortable moving forward? As you asked earlier, what would you think, what did I think we should do? And I think we should move forward with the assurance program, and allow them to continue this monitoring program. And as we move through here, one of the things about it is that essentially, if we were, everything was done on time, we'd been like year six or seven, I think. But we're really year one. And so this is a 10-year program, and one of the things that I talk about, it does give us the opportunity, it's not, even though we've laid out the 10 years for you, but it does give us the opportunity to adjust as things are identified. And, you know, as we talked about, there are some things over in the annex building that we could do, that we could make adjustments to the assurance program and be able to undertake those.
Certainly seems to have been fruitful. I think Counsel would agree with that, no?
Yes.
Counselor in Britain, what do you think?
There's two sides of that.
There's more your bellywink than ours. Actually, you sat on the committee with them, didn't you?
What I see here is pretty beneficial to this. It might well be having a terminal commissioning thing, the industry doesn't very work out of this, this kind of commissioning, putting something in, baseline, and making sure it actually doesn't exist. That's very important for HVACs and facility systems, so that's what I like to see. The other side of the coin is, you know... The other side of the coin is, you know, putting in lights is great, save money, but if a light bulb costs you $8, it's going to save you $2 over the year over the 57, all the noise you pay back there. That's where a lot of this stuff gets scrutinized. We do, the federal government pays a million dollars to go replace light bulbs, and you never get power back out of it. So, that's the balance you have to hold, but I do like the aspects of bettering, especially the big facility systems, which I have as this area in our unit. I think the audit showed it as being in good shape, whatever that means. But now, it's been showing up, so it must be replaced in the last couple of years. Question, what is it really need to be replaced for? Is it out really okay? And you guys can mention that.
That's a key point. If I could jump in, the day I was here, we had to be replacing, maybe shorter. And we had done the initial survey, it was six years ago. That show was fine, and six years is gone, but it's just about time for another second year, because it's the same city, but they're in time for it.
The other question I have is on moving facilities. We just built a fire station, I wish we would have had you guys on board then to make some recommendations, and we probably want to do a lot of savings. So, the term BIB comes to mind, building information management, you know, I see a partnership all here, putting the requirements for BIB, the architectural package, and then have you guys come in and ask the measure what that building's doing, and, you know, after they've commissioned it. So, there's a lot of good stuff that I can share.
And we certainly like that in this, in terms of doing the ability, this is pretty handy out of those recessions, those that send the light, part of the development process.
So, if you needed a thumb up, thumb down for the first year, I could say, yeah, because I took this money well spent, especially for the big areas, pool system, HVACs, things like that.
I mean, my recommendation would be that right now, continue the status quo. It gives the opportunity to.
Explore other.
Explore other things.
Yeah, I mean, just having you guys, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. Counselman Britton, as you can tell, is very detailed, lives and breathes this more than most of us, and he's usually right on, but just, you know, looking at this, you know, from having you guys, having you guys around is a good thing. It keeps all our facilities modern. You guys are in touch and staying on this, you know, in this industry of what we need and telling us, teaching us things, you know, before you came, you know, Counselman Britton probably has geothermal as backyard, you know, knowing the way he does it, but, you know, we didn't know, so. But the savings is, the savings we've had is.
He wasn't a geothermal fan.
Yeah, but the savings has been incredible, so for me, it's a no-brainer. You guys are doing good, the numbers are incredible, you know, to save that money, it'd be $700,000 probably a year, and that's a big deal.
Certainly is.
You know?
But it's, you know, it's important, as you said, particularly with the efficiency of the construction, the reception, having this type of information from the total product business department, showing you guys, you guys have done in terms of making a really good adjustment in handling the equipment, and we have a sense, it's a good stewardship that can be found.
Great.
How do you all agree on this question? You say you can go with the cost share, saying insurance.
Well, we were, during the construction period, the loan that we spent to do were six and eight, that's our loan. And as we do work, and we submit partnerships, just like in a construction, nothing, and we make our money, just like, as you see, the way they work at food station.
That's pretty mental, like you stuck around. To make that draw, and it disappeared, and it's up to the law. But a lot of, you guys are easy to find.
Well, hey, we're easy to find, and it can be that it's one thing to walk away from retention, it's another thing to walk away from kinders of performance guarantees.
Right. Hey, if you remember, we were one of the first, if I remember right, we were an early adopter into this program, so.
And so, it is one of those things where the nature of this contract changes the nature of relationships, and contracts have been tested, we're here for a long period of time, not just, you know, most D cities, you have to get the final payment, and they say, here's their fingers crossed for that 12 months of warranty period, you don't get any phone calls, and then they're done, we have to go ahead and be coming out looking for problems, you know, from that standpoint, so it is a different relationship.
Well, terrific. Looks like Mr. Cobb has direction.
Yes, sir.
And if you hang around after the meeting and catch Counselman Schenk up on the half hour he missed.
Can I ask just one more question? Because I just want to add, based on your, the numbers, was that the performance, what the 800, 705,000, was that, as you started sitting, we've got the extra benefit, it's been years, so, is that number based on baseline, or is it year to year based on the year? Is that off the year to point, or based on the total? Do you believe it or do you?
The, well, the 700,000 was just for that 12.
The one year, okay. My thought size was confirming, because I, you know, as we talked about the other three years ahead, and we, we were not allowed to take credit for that to make our first year, I'm saying.
Take that as a scale, because you multiply that by three.
Yeah, yeah, plus or minus.
It's more or less what you had.
A little bit of that.
So, really an estimate. So, you know, we did not take credit for that construction period.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't think you did, I mean, I'm reading this, but.
But it's a valid question, given this one is a good answer, so.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time and the thorough explanation of all the going time.
We figured out just the least.
And he was kidding. You guys go have dinner, see you later.
Well, I am surprised you hear this, they call it a bottom of the knee, the rock reacting about purposing services emotions, unless you hear that you're receiving them. Is that really true, first of all? You can't pay now for a service that's going to go next term?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can't pay now, you can't pay services in the future, you can't pay as services. Item number four, delegation of authority regarding Oviedo on the Park signage. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you, and the hour is getting late, so you have, I think two questions here, so.
I'll be very quick, Mayor. Yes, we do.
Let's just drill it down.
This is a request from Mr. Kavanaugh. As you know, you are the land use administrators for Oviedo on the Park. And Mr. Kavanaugh, if you remember from your last meeting, you approved an alternative design that was part of your master sign plan. And so, Mr. Kavanaugh has asked that you delegate your land use administrator authority regarding the signage to myself or Dr. Correa, because he feels that there's going to be other changes occurring before the time. He wants to be able to move quickly, and so, he asked that he be able to address you and make the request for you delegating the authority. The second thing is, is that we have a design for you of the Mitchell Hammock Road city sign. It incorporates an electronic variable message sign, it is a scrolling sign, has one level on it. And we wanted to get your input regarding that, if you felt like that was a direction you wanted to go in, or if you wanted to stay more toward the static sign that is planned for in the master sign plan. So, those are the two questions that we have for you tonight.
Tom, Sue, let's take on the LED sign first. Anybody have any objections to an LED sign out front?
No.
Counselman Schenk?
Uh, yeah, it's giving, what's the dimensions? It's giving dimensions to it. Even they talk about it around, yeah, like, dimensional wise, it's small, long run, small. I just think dropping, if you drop it, again, for where they're going to travel the signs, for where it's going to be happening, it's just, until we get more money, it'd be the whole area poor, but just having a one-pointed sign, Steve, is smaller than the signs that it was.
Well, the one of the things that, no, this is, I get it, this is the signs that we will have on both sides of city walk lane.
No, he needs the gateways at the beginning of the city, like.
Oh, it'll be smaller, smaller. Yes, it would be smaller. It was, the thing that, that we've, it's hard to tell on that up there, but basically, the demographic has an electronic variable message sign that's 11 feet wide, but it's 10 inches tall. So, it's basically one scrolling message. The thing that alarmed me on it is, and this may be something that, it's a bit of a custom design, but the, you'll see to the right of the graphic, there is an example. And that example's decisions, dimensions are 12 and a half inches tall and about five feet wide. So, I don't know if you can get an 11-foot wide instrument to put in here, that's the thing I don't know. The other thing that concerns me is only having one row scrolling across the sign, because you have people traveling at 45 miles per hour. Now, granted, I do know that DOT says the minimum size of a letter you need at 45 miles per hour is 12 inches. I know that. But, yes, you know, I'm not sure that a one-level scrolling sign is going to give us the message, rather than having, being able to have a multi-level sign.
So, you go sideways to see this, or you'll see the heads out of the building?
You'll see it. Well, it'll be on both sides of the road, and actually, it'll be parallel to the right one, based on the, based on the measure.
If you're driving down this path, you'll look to the right.
You'll look to the right, or to the left, depending on which way you're going. Yes, sir. Counselor, sorry.
I expect usage, it's going to be for the citizens.
Yes, sir.
For our events that are going to be there. So, either upcoming food truck, it's going to go out and put a food truck banner up, you know, this Saturday or before, you put some other banners up, you know, I don't know, I think we got other ways to have it, it's going to be good. A week before, we put whatever's going to be there Friday night, or whatever the day is, moving on Friday, or coming to us Saturday, we'll put a concert, we'll kind of.
Why don't we make the whole thing LED and just program in there, center park, Oviedo on the park sign?
That I don't have there. We can look at it, no, we can look at it and see what the cost is.
That's what I'm saying, if the whole thing was, I would.
Can you bring that cost back to us?
Yes. Yes.
About a few who go buy it.
No, no, I wanted to get, I wanted to get from you how you felt about having a electronic variable message sign in it. We didn't plan for it in the beginning. This was something that Mr. Kavanaugh brought to us, we thought, hey, this is a good idea, but I do have concerns about one row scrolling across.
What about the colors? Like, right now, we only have one color, can we have multi-colors out there, because it's a different jurisdiction and we're in charge of it, instead of just gray or whatever?
That would be up to you all.
Why don't we find out the cost first before we start?
I think, Counsel, I think we can, we can probably.
Was the cost for standing on the side?
Uh, gosh, now I'm going through the recesses of my mind. I'd have to go look it up. I couldn't tell you right now. I've got it sitting on the third shelf on my bookcase.
You definitely need something, as somebody's driving down there 45 miles an hour, that they can catch it.
Or, like Steve said, we just use banners.
Use a banner, you have a big banner, you go across the board, and you can drop it in the words, whatever.
Yes.
That was the original plan.
Pat, could you pull up the other attachment, the attachment theory? Could you pull that up? And what she's going to pull up is what's in your, this is what's in your master plan. And one of the things that was contemplated on this was that, this board, that it is a static board, but the idea would be that the board's replaceable. It's, it can come out and be replaced with a different sign. One of the things that the deputy mayor and I talked about last week at the conference was the possibility of using vinyl and being able, like, you can see the part on the bottom part where it talks about farmer's market, taking vinyl and being able to put on the blocks.
You know, build it in there, just click in some vinyl, and have it stretchable, you can have farmer's market, or it's going to line every month, take it off, and that's the one every month.
My thing that crossed my mind was the food trucks, because that's every month, you know, but underneath it, there would be something that you advertise.
You know, the board around the lake is very popular, looks really good, and it's more modern and whatever, I mean, that's, that's okay, but like, if the price came back and you could get a sign that big, that was changeable copy, that'd be better, in my opinion, anyway. This way, it can be changed very easily, you know, and people could see it when they're driving. You get enough problem with people texting, slowing down to look at this 11-foot thing and try to, he texts one more there, and the chief will be going.
Well, it just like seen the one, you know, we had a lot of, one other, the police woman was out there in the middle of the street, you could see driving, you could be like, oh, there's something out there, the food truck out.
Yeah.
Well, the good news about this is that the master plan allows us to do the electronic variable message. Yeah, but I just wanted to get from you all before I started, before Mr. Kavanaugh and I started going down this path, I wanted to make sure that you all were.
Get the cost, bring it back to us.
Okay.
You know, what Steve just came up with, with seeing that it's parallel to Mitchell Hammock, maybe, maybe a stretchable banner.
We also have a big art sign and something, like, when the tickets come up, we have a banner, we have that also, and it's got multiple opportunities.
We did.
See how much it is.
All righty, what's, what's next?
Mr. Kavanaugh's request for a delegation to, on your master sign plan, delegate your land use administrator authority.
And why?
Once again, I think it's time. There are, he wants flexibility to make adjustments to the signs and be able to move quickly. And he feels that, as you recall with the other sign, we brought it to council for your blessing, on consent, and asked that you, it wasn't on consent, it was on resolution, so I take that back. But, you know, what, what we believe as a staff is that if he comes in and he meets the dimensional requirements of the signage, he meets the, he's consistent with the graphical elements of the signage in the master plan, we believe that we can approve it, we have the ability to do it. We can approve what meets your master plan, but when we deviate from the master plan, we believe that we need to come to council because you are the land use administrators. And so, that's where Mr. Kavanaugh feels that, you know.
Timing.
It's more or less.
I can appreciate and understand that, but we spent a year and a half putting together a sign package. Why do we do that then? What was the whole point? If we're going to put together what everybody agreed on, that the signs were going to look like, and his designer, and our designer, came up with this whole entire package, and Counselman Schenk spent a year going through it, if that's not the signs you're going to build in the first place, why do we go through that whole damn exercise? I mean, no offense, but.
I understand.
You know? I have no interest in it, so I'll let, I'll let the three of them decide it, I have no interest.
I like uniformed the sign, I like uniformed that.
Tom, you can come sit up there.
And if there's.
Sure you can, come on up.
Change, I don't know. Yeah, I understand. I would say, you know, whether it's logo change, if somebody wants a logo of that M&amp;B to be different than, I think it's a copy size within the.
Right.
The sign that says whatever, come on out.
And that's, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about dimensional, and we're talking about overall design.
Yeah.
We approved, we approved 95% of what we gave us, almost exactly, for the sign package, we used like the end of this, we gave like 95% of exactly that.
It was better than they were. I'm not asking you to change the design tech. We, as a group, put far more information in this than it really should be on the sign package. You know, it turned it into a behemoth that has dimensions, it has material, and I think what everybody was focusing on at the time was pretty vicious. We are now going through the exercise of building, and let me just give you the simplistic, look at the brackets on there, okay? There are dimensions in the sign package that probably have that list that is two foot six inches. I can't, because of the coursing of the, the simplistic of the way it is, get you two foot six inches. I may be two foot eight inches and a half. For me to come back here every single time that I get two-inch variation, I'm wasting your time. We're wasting staff's time, we're wasting everybody's time, because you don't have enough council meetings over the next year for me to come back here every single time I get to do something. Give you another example, maybe the LED sign. In a month, I'm going to have to send the ground, potentially, and when I have the ability to change from LED to. to change from LED to the thick sign. So, you know, you'll see all these dimensions, three, four, four inches. We're never going through the structural side equation, which is the new shop rooms, which means they go to the building department. Things are going to change. A lot of these states call for two inches, two-inch steel. I know because I'm going to meet some of the legal requirements that someone is going to be three inches. So every time I change a dimension, I, you know, legally, in Mr. Cobb's interpretation is, I need to come back here and ask you to change a dimension. Why? I just think it's unproductive. I mean, I'm not asking you to change the design intent. I'm just asking to help me meet the code, meet the building department's requirements, meet the structural requirements and give you something that looks like this substantially ninety-eight percent, okay? That I can legally build. The whole, it's fifty or sixty pages that was documented and every single page, it has dimensions on it, has a look, it has height, it has everything on it. The classic examples when I brought back just the blade sign or the door, it didn't change that much. You know, we got with my professionals and we changed it ever so slightly because when we did this a year ago, and the mayor's actually right, we worked on this for a year, year and a half, we didn't have all pieces of the puzzle together. I was just trying to get a sign package together so I could represent to people, I e my retail guys, that we got some sign in, this is what it's going to look like and you really need to come to the city verbatim. Everybody was concerned about that, that's why we put together the pretty pictures and said, this is what we want to prove. We've taken it one step further that if it's not verbatim, and I mean verbatim, the interpretation of staff is, I am going to come back here. And I'm in the middle of constructing some of this stuff and all due respect, when we're ready to put this into production, I don't have a month and a half, all due respect, to come back here to ask to change a dimension. It's tough getting on your calendars. Some months you have one piece, some months you have two, some months it's filled, some months it's not. I'm just voicing my concern, there's got to be a better way here to cooperate from city to developer and give some of power, power approval back just a step. If, if, if you guys want the way it is, then it's the way it's going to be, but it's just I'm going to be here on a monthly basis.
We love to see you in that. The first meeting is always yours.
Well, you know, I'll be frank and I'll be blunt. You know, what, what you say is absolutely one thousand percent true, that we should be able to trust staff to make these decisions. But the problem is, Tom, is you brought a lot of this on yourself. Every time you come in here and we approve something, you come back and try to change it or tweak it as you like to call it. And that's what created this whole situation two or three years ago and we took this away from staff. So that's the problem. I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult. I mean, I, I know you think I am. I know I'm your favorite punching bag and that's fine. I'm a big boy, I can take it. But I'm the guy who's got to go out there and tell my residents that we're going to build you what we promised and we've already tweaked it a hundred little times. Nothing major, but, you know, that's the problem. Uh, quite frankly, if I were to come back, if I would have been here with this strand sign here and the park place sign, would I have approved it? Maybe, probably, but, you know, that's the frustration. You know, and then, and then there's changes on the buildings done when I'm gone, there's, there's more changes on the buildings coming. What, 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 what did we spend two hours debating in here approving the plan if it's just going to keep being changed? That's my frustra, we have never dealt with this with the developer anywhere in this city and I've sat there for seventeen years. That's the problem. We approve something, you change it. We approve something, you change it. We approve something, you change it. You break their chops every Tuesday morning. That's the problem. So how do you earn our trust back? That's your problem.
If it's not Tom Kavanaugh's city you're changing, it's the world, it's the retailers that want to be here, it, it's the suppliers that are telling me I can't get the material link or it's the, your, your own building department telling me that these are curtain walls and.
I agree a hundred percent. If, if you could bring to staff that building is telling, telling you something has to be changed, you're right. We shouldn't be holding you up and Brian should be able to approve that. So I'd be willing to give Brian that authority.
Ninety-eight percent of the changes that I asked for those little issues were all about external factors. None of that to do with Tom Kavanaugh's going to do here and say, I just like to change it because I need it a little better.
And I agree. And this, and this is a, this is a much bigger project other than when I was here at the tail end of the mall being finished up or Leibok and Sanctuary, uh, you know. I mean, my gosh, Dick German built a thousand homes and never came in here with this many things.
Dick German was operating under different set of rules, different set of, the, the staff and city manager have the authority to approve the little tweaks and everything changing.
Are we gonna spray you? Use some tubes, do you? We need to use a three-inch piece of tube. We're gonna spray you for doing it? I have to come back here for one? Okay, that's right. What, what are the changes, okay? I, I know there are some sign changes to strike.
Quite frankly, I don't know. Okay, I, the ones that I know about are the ones we brought to you. Okay? And that was the, it was completely different.
This side, this, this.
The building side. And so that was fine. I mean, I.
I thought there was some sign changes. There's some and that they, the, the code that we, what we approved said X by X, and this stuff is becoming an X plus three and Y minus two. And it's starting to come through like that versus needing, what, what the, again, contraction we, what we have agreed and approved to do, again, that you wrote that contract that we've agreed to do.
My understanding is there's been some things with the, with the signs that are supposed to be coming soon, now open for lease signs. The, uh, I guess the dimensions that are listed in the master plan don't match the previously, remember the signs?
Sign that was up there.
Sign that was, that's, that's from.
As specific dimensions are that he's building.
Those pretty pictures that we approved.
Master plan. Yes, sir, the master plan.
That's not a set of design.
The, the, your sign master plan has minimum and maximum technical design. Yes.
Minimum and maximum.
Yes, minimum and maximum.
Is that exact dimensions? So you're trying to, you see the minimum and maximum, is that what you're telling us?
There's some exact dimension there, nineteen feet six inches.
That's, that's a record. That's how it designed out. The inspector's going to, are you going to have a inspector go out there and measure nineteen point six inches?
If he, yeah.
Well, I agree. You're going to change this place.
Is that a construction?
What I, what I would be looking at on this, what I would be looking at is that if he brought me a sign that was fourteen feet wide and was four feet tall, then I would say you need a deviation because that exceeds what's in the master plan.
That's not, that's not a construction though. That's, that's the problem here. We don't have drawings to go build, we have a master plan, which is a guide, but it's not, it's not.
This master plan has, it is a development agreement. It is a statutory development agreement. It is, it's basically your land development code for the signs. That's what it is.
That's done.
It's not sign to seal, no, it's not sign to seal, but it is, it is an adopted, it is an adopted recorded land development code that establishes.
Brian, let, let Mike explain the legality.
So zoning and building go with that problem.
When we get down to the dimensional level.
Yes, sir.
Anything that deviates requires a deviation. Thanks, Teresa.
Anything that deviates requires a land use administrator to say, yes, it's okay.
So we've taken responsibility to make sure that that meets all land codes, all building codes.
No, these are just designs, dimensional designs.
But that's what you just said. You said you've got to build it exactly like that.
Right.
And so we've taken. Sign by size law. It relates to sizes.
Yes, it relates to the size.
Somewhere, someone's got to have a drawing that measures the size and says this is the way it should be built and it meets all the codes. Where is that?
That will be, that will be submitted with the building permit by the sign contractor. Okay? When it comes to the staff review, the first thing they're going to do is they're going to look and see if it meets the dimensions within the master sign.
And you go up to nineteen feet six inches, that type of tolerance?
Yes.
That's, that's ridiculous.
I'll give you, okay, I, I'm not going to disagree there, there should be some, and we can work on that, but I'll give you the other side of that. Tom, the sign's been up for how many years? You tell us the sign you're creating, that you put in a picture, that's that sign that's out there for three years, you can't do that sign. You, you put in, we're not the same sign.
I'm not sure.
The coming soon, coming now signs, but the signs, basically the signs in the picture, they're the signs that are represented, the signs that are out there now. They were based off the signs that are out there now.
I'm not sure the dimensions from what we have put up have changed. Um, we only put up a couple of signs that said coming soon. I'm not sure that those dimensions will change because it's just, you know, that's just wood and putting it up. I can't tell you they're, they're on with two inches, they may be of two inch paddle.
My understanding was, was that the frames that were out there before we did the master plan are different from what's in the master plan. That's my understanding.
And I think they're being designed to get closer to the overall signs that they meet the master plan, but I, I'm not too concerned about having a sign that's off the edge. I'm more concerned about when you develop a structural problem and that dimension is to.
If you took this, this render and you laid it over Google Earth of that sign, I would guarantee you it would fit. Because if it's different, they want this wrong.
It's a good point. It's going to change. When we, when we get to designing, he said, shoot one in with a survey, construction guys and all, these things are going to roll up there, they're going to shrink a little bit, they're going to be comfortable with a sidewalk.
Hang on a second. Steve?
I just got to.
Steve's been trying to get it.
It's, it's fine. You know, I have to agree with the mayor here. I mean, Tom, this is, and I, and I'm just going to say what you said to us. This is with all due respect, Oviedo on the Park is coming out good, but I have said this a million times, this park, contrary to what most people believe, was not approved by us. This was a plan that was worked on for many years, that was shown to many residents and they voted for this park the way it is at an election. And the reason, I tell Brian this all the time, I don't want to be land use administrator, I have complete faith in him, but this one we have to get right. And I, I totally hear where you're going, but that sign that we, I, I approved that sign, but that sign is totally different than what, what we approved in the sign package. I think it looks better. The sign, the strand sign.
The building sign.
Yeah, the sign we did at the last meeting. But, but the argument that, and I said this to you the other day, because this is really a continuation of the other one, the argument that people that want to come into Oviedo on the Park are going to dictate the architecture, I can't accept that. I want to look at Oviedo on the Park. And the only reason I want to look at it is because the voters approved it, we showed them a picture and it's my job to say, I'm going to deliver what you people voted for. And that's the bottom line. Um, and you had mentioned at the last meeting, when I was talking to you about these windows, you said, well, a lot of more win, a lot of, a lot of more, more windows are going to be changing. Well, no, they're not, not unless we approve it. We have to approve this project and make it right. If this was just somebody bought a lot and was building it, then Brian and Teresa could handle it, but when the voters approve something, it really is our job. And Tom, I got to tell you, we get the calls all the time, we don't like this, we don't like that, that's not what I did. I mean, it's coming out the way it's supposed to, but we keep letting all these changes come in, it's, it's bad and I, I can't, I'm, I'm not going to give it up.
On Brian. How can we, I don't know.
Right, so how do we compromise here? Because I'm, I'm hearing two different things.
Some part of this and say, well, as far as signs, the size of sign or some, if there's a structural component, there's, how do I, how do I do something?
To help us.
I mean, how, how do I, I don't know the mechanism to say, well, I'll give you the ability to do this, but only if it relates to, well, there's a structural assessing you have facilitated, the size differential that, well.
Well, how do we address Councilman Britton's point?
I, I, I have a conclusion for you.
Right, where does common sense go?
Okay. I would say give us authority on the dimension.
Certain percentage.
Okay, certain percentage. You want to give us, right now, we can go up to twenty percent on any other development within the city. You want to give that to us, fine. I would say give us that ability. And one of the things that Mr. Group was just mentioning to us, if it's something structural, if the building code says you got to do it this way, then we should be able.
Tom's absolutely right about that.
We should be able, we should be able to move forward on that. But in instances where the design completely changes, you should, it should be wrong.
And you can't always.
In the other, everywhere else in the city, if something like that occurs, that comes to me as the land use administrator and I make a ruling on it, okay? You're taking on that in Oviedo on the Park. When things come up of that magnitude, yes, they should come to you as land use administrators, unless you decide to delegate it back. But I would say in order to, for him to move quickly, give us the same delegation that you, you've given us everywhere else in the city. Let us have dimensional variances or deviations as we call them, dimensional deviations. Allow us to go up to that twenty percent.
If it's structural only or no?
No, no, just anywhere. If it's structural, anything.
Brian, did you just say, you know, Tom, you said sometimes you're running into two-inch pipe, three-inch pipe, but it's going to look the same. Stuff like that, that's, that, it, it's the percentage, you know? I don't know if it's twenty percent or whatever, but if he has something like that, it's going to hold him up and it's going to look the same and it's a two-inch or three, it, it still meets the intent of the original plan.
That's it.
I mean, is that what you're saying?
I'm not asking for the architectural blue. I'm just asking to give some of the work that your staff deal with construction problems are going to have on a daily basis. It can be as simple as I'm sitting right on top of a four-power line out there and I've got to move that facility two feet to the north or to the south and I've got to shrink it up three feet because four-power screen, I mean, I can't be sitting on the middle of the switch.
That would be fine, but a building that has a hundred windows, that's going down to twenty windows is a problem. Would you not say that?
We're just talking, I'm just talking about signage.
Yeah, yeah, we're not talking.
Just talking about signage.
I'm just making a point.
Just talking about signage. That would be my suggestion to you, Councilman. Give me the ability to go to, to work with the dimensional issues and give me the ability to work on the structural issues.
What you have now, up to twenty percent.
Only on signs.
Yes.
Whatever's in the sign, a pre, the sign package, there's a whole host of signs, there's, there's banners, there's.
Banner signs, whatever they are.
Whatever's in this agreement.
The banner signs, boards, uh, wayfinding, not the, not the old sandwich board.
Yes.
That was, that was the one. If it's in, if it's in the sign package, he can now do twenty percent deviation on dimensions and structural deviations if necessary to meet our building codes or wind loads.
Except for standards.
What is it with you and these sandwich boards? Stop.
Who cares?
Tom, is that going to work? Is that going to work for you, Tom?
Yeah, so it's, it's one situation we'll bring back and talk about. I just, I can't build, the real world says I can't build exactly what's in that.
Then why, then why did you draw it up?
I signed it back because I wanted to change it and took it back. There's gonna be...
But you drew the agreement up.
Things change, you know? Things just kind of change. Let's talk a little bit about the sign. If you guys need permission, because we're gonna need one of those blocks here that's gonna be...
You said something, did you not get our conduit or our conduits? We have to leave it unplugged. I mean, I'm gonna think it had five minutes.
Just drop the conduit into it.
Or how, that in the future, if we want to put up, darn it, we're talking LEDs now, so we're not gonna drop a conduit in there in case we wanna put a piece on, we've got our conduit everywhere as far as I'm concerned, but not a conduit out to that. Well, you want to have LED sign in the future.
I don't know. Okay, right now, there's, well, it's not shown, so he's gotta pay the work of the matter, but it's a little bit bigger problem than that, because if you're gonna put a structural box with an LED sign, and now you're talking about weight, now you're talking about wind, and that foundation's gotta be done. You know, right now, is what we have in our signed documents, we have that sign that's supposed to be made of plexiglass material that acts like you drop it in.
But if we're talking LED already, and if it's not, if you brought it to us, hey, I have an LED cost, and we're talking about LED, so...
Why don't we just future?
But also, put in the cost, look at the cost of what it would take to harden that up, so that, two things to look at, hardening it up so that in the future LED it, and the LED cost. I mean, that's, why are we gonna build it and then not have it start in the future? In five years, the LED cost that we wanna do, realistically speaking.
There's a lot of things involved with it. Even, right now, you've got a very thin piece of plexiglass that acts as, slightly as light, and what you guys gotta consider is over a 12-month period, a year period. How many pieces of plexiglass do you guys wanna go out on? How many events are you gonna have? What do you wanna advertise? In theory, you could have 20 pieces of plexiglass that have to be stored somewhere, and somebody's gonna come out, put in, take out, on a weekly, monthly basis, whatever. Okay? Let me just ask a couple, answer a couple of their questions. Mr. Cott was correct, the plan should have two cabinets. I don't think it's, that ultimately will work that way. I think we're gonna build it in one cabinet so we can scroll across 11 feet, 12 feet. I don't know what it is, but if we start talking about custom cabinet, that means I need to come back to you and I need to get a stock cabinet. I can't tell you if that cabinet's 11 feet or 13 feet. Okay? I can get these colors. I don't want you guys to think that the LED sign is all red, it's one color. Believe one aspect is tri-color. Okay? I do believe I can run two lines. So if we want to run one line, eight to 10 inches, whatever it is, I probably can run two lines, three to four inches. There was another proposal about creating, somebody asked a question, what did the sign in the park cost? Okay? Excluding the frame, the structural aspect, that sign was about $60,000. It's an expensive sign. Okay? These aren't gonna be that expensive.
I'm just saying, I'm just getting an idea of what we're talking about.
Totally, totally different scenario here with what we're trying to accomplish, up in the air, structural aspects of things, wind, we're gonna look at all of this. There is a picture somewhere around here that actually shows, instead of the sign being horizontal, being more vertical, let's just say we turn it on to 90, and it's a four-foot tall sign and about a three-foot tall cabinet. That is gonna give you the ability to have more copy, more design, more, how should I say, just a nicer quality sign. To do that, that basically means we're looking at a redesign of this sign package here. Okay? So, we are really fast and furious, because one of the first things that I'm about to do is I'm looking at this term right now, and the next thing that I've instructed my contractor to do is I want all of our taking in the front end, which we can make it look pretty. This is coming quick. So when I pour that foundation, okay, we have now passed the point of no return for an LED sign that's gonna be possibly some post gone out of it, some beefed up foundations, I've got wind designs, I've got a lot of other things to take into consideration. So, you know, right now, I have budgeted in my numbers, the LED sign's rolling on by. I upgraded it, it's in my numbers, it's my present to the city. Okay? My contract on issues was there, but I do have an LED sign budgeted, and if you go there, you'll get the conduit, you'll get the increase to you, and you'll get the structural, we'll get it all. Okay? I think the real question is, if you guys are looking at an LED sign, do you want a horizontal sign, which is more in line with the existing sign that we have out there, or do we want the banner, they call it banner type LED sign? Okay? To me, they're both worth, we're just trying to advertise city events. Yeah, that's the, that's the LED sign at the bottom of there. And again, this isn't really Tom Cottell's design. What this is, is Vic's height, who is the designer of record, has put this together so that it's all cohesive, it looks nice, it fits in the rest of the design from a scaling standpoint, from a, you know, color, from architectural standpoint. So, we can go this route without too much trouble out. Changing it to a more horizontal sign, okay, involves a little bit of work. I think the decision needs to be made.
Or changing it all to LED, the whole thing.
Changing it all to LED, that's the horizontal sign that I'm looking at, that gives you a cabinet like it's already installed in the park. Okay? That cost is somewhere between what you have out there and this cost right here. Okay?
Well, it's costing a lot.
Correct. That's my, that's my point. Changing it to the horizontal will have an additional cost, just because the square footage of the LED is going to be more, and you're asking the board to do more. You know, there's a whole set of program for making a sign just scroll. When you start doing interactive, then you have different pixels, you've got different equipment that's being...
Or that sign could just say, static, food truck Thursday, or it could say, static, whatever. Doesn't have to scroll.
Can I go to our next speed? I mean, do we have anything too fast, or?
No, no, we have our separate speed, but it can scroll as fast as you want. It can be static, it can be moving at, you know, one foot every 10 seconds. I believe we have the ability to program it that way. I know we can get it, I believe respects all for tri-color already. Okay? I'm just not 100% sure. Can I sit here and tell you, if it dovetails into my conversation, we just had 20%. Is it gonna be exactly two cabinets that are five and a half feet by 11 inches tall? I don't think so. That's just a pretty picture that somebody pulled out a book and put it there nine months ago, 10 months ago. I need to find a vendor in town that can build, you know, not a custom cabinet, but a stock cabinet that accomplishes everything that we want to accomplish.
Well, we have a meeting September 8th. Can we have something?
Well, he's looking, she's looking for the prices for, right? We need to price this hopefully, at least an idea of prices at a whole.
I think it's gonna be better than 19, 15%.
Can we wait till 19?
Right, I can't get your information, but yeah, I think it's safe to say. I think the real discussion is, do we stay with this, or do we change it to a horizontal board? Just for, you know, something to think about.
You're saying you want to see the pricing board before you make your decision?
I don't want to see the hundred, the example.
This is what I would thought, staff would measure whatever you'd like. And it's got a foundation, a conduit. I don't know what the flag was saying, don't have that.
But the point I'm trying to make with the structural document is, sizing the rework could change, footage could change, it's just, it's something that we put together nine months ago.
Yeah, it doesn't say. To me, it just needs to be covered. It doesn't matter what size it's for, it's leaving me. I'm sure it's gotta be a certain size, but I don't see the motion on it.
Some have to mention some, you know? And I think with 20%, it gives a good basis to allow staff to take a look at. I'm not asking to change this.
So the 19th, you're gonna bring something back to us, and we'll make a final decision on this thing.
Cool.
Brian, you've got direction on what you can approve and can't approve, so you can keep Tom rolling along. And we're coming up on three hours, so unless there's anything else, we're gonna move along.
No.
All right, Tom.
All right, Mr. Groot, item number five.
Pat, could you pull up that graphic? Thank you. Okay. I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can.
Yeah, let's just get to the meter. If you've already discussed it with us, tell us what you need from us.
What I need to know from you is, do we want to pursue a program involving our stormwater fee? To increase the stormwater fee, and using the increase, the increment increase, using that to purchase the golf course. As you know, you did a mediation, and you had a memorandum of understanding. And if you look up there, you see the property, just to the right, this says approximately 48 acres. Pat, if you could just zoom out a little bit, I'd appreciate that. Of course, the golf course is down there, and it's approximately 300 acres. They've got 282, that's what GIS says it is. Pat, if you'll go back up to the top. We found, we found a deed restriction. Mayor was correct when he asked a question of is there something out there. I mean, that was to myself, I mean, that was to Dr. Correa. There was a Florida Community's Trust reimbursed us for the purchase of the agreement, maybe purchase of the property. And so, we talked with Florida Community's Trust, and they said that there was, we could relocate the restriction. However, they would also, they would say, we're not gonna do acre per acre, we're gonna ask more of you. You can see through there, there is, city does own 95 acres immediately adjacent to the park. And that's another thing that they said, it's gotta be continuous. And then, we also have the 41 acres is the Oviedo Sports Complex, and then further to the west is Round Lake Park. We looked at the possibility of saying, okay, FCT will relocate the restriction to those three properties. The thing about it is, is that, in order to do that, each of those properties has to meet certain criteria, which would require us to go into, would require us to conduct numerous studies, numerous appraisals on each, on all of those properties, and that's just to make application. The board could still say no. And the thing about it is, is that the board, all of those properties together would have to come up with some similar score that occurred when we received the grant. We received a $1.7 million grant. It paid for 60%. We had 40% as our local manager. The, in looking at it, the cost didn't seem feasible, just to go and hope that the board would say, yes, you can relocate the restriction. So then we looked at another option, the 95 acres up there, which is a former construction and demolition landfill. We said, what if we offered that to the golf course ownership? Well, the thing about that is, is that, that construction and demolition landfill has a cap over it, it's a six-foot fill of cap. All of the development would have to sit on top of that cap. There's a concern that, we don't know the compaction of the cap, so it's a concern that the settlement would...
We don't want to build on that, so just keep it going.
So, then we had the idea of, well, what if we purchased it? We don't have to deal with FCT. And how would we do that? So one of the things that we looked at is, one of the things that we've had through all of our discussions, is that the golf course is important to our stormwater management program. One of the ways that it's very important is that it is important toward our flood management. It's at the confluence of two rivers. And so, it takes on water at times when the river's pressed. The other thing is, is that the stormwater management system within the, within the golf course could also be utilized as part of our overall. It also is an advantage to our community rating system, in that it brings us huge points for open space credits, which helps with the folks that have to have, that have to have the flood insurance. It helps keep that cost in check, because we have a very high score on community ratings.
10% now, probably?
10%. So that's important, it's important. So we felt like that utilizing the stormwater management fee toward the acquisition of the property.
Wet weather storage, too.
That's the other thing. Doing that was a, was a good, appropriate use of those dollars. The mayor just mentioned the wet weather storage. That's on the utility side, that's on the sewer side. The ponds could be constructed such that we could take the wet weather stores at the sewer plant and send it to the golf course. Now, that also helps with irrigation of the golf course as well. What that does is, that the property behind us, where we currently send the wet weather storage, could then be developed, and could become part of our downtown area, instead of the, our wet weather storage ponds. It would also allow us to not have to do certain improvements at the store, at the wastewater plant, because one of the things you either do, you either find places to put it, or you have to build a tank. So the idea is that we would use it at the golf course. And then, that, once again, was another appropriate use of our utility monies, in reconfiguring the ponds, so that we could send the wet weather stores there. So we saw two benefits there, on the stormwater side and the wastewater side for acquisition of the property. And then, we also would not have to go through the exercise of trying to determine whether or not we can meet the FCT requirements for moving. Now, I will say this, one of the things that we did, I met with the, with the golf course owners. And one of the things they asked, they're still interested in that property. And so, one of the things they asked, they said, would you allow us to go and see if we could get it unraveled for you? And they brought up different examples of how other local governments have bought their way out of it, basically. And so, I went and I started looking. We have two agreements with FCT. We have one for the grant, and we have two, the second one is for this restriction. The grant has a clause in it that says that the boundary of the project site can be altered, and that FCT has the right to basically take back the money, based on it. It also refers to a Florida, a rule within Florida administrative code. So I'm looking for that rule. And that rule was repealed in 2010. There's a new rule now, which is why the FCT staff said, well, you can exchange, because the new rule only talks about enlarging the project site, and it only talks about exchanging land. However, there may be a way for, if the golf course ownership is interested in this, one of the things they could pursue is that you have an existing agreement that says that the boundary can be altered. So, my recommendation to you would be to...
Well, they're willing to go do this, let them go do it.
Well, that's, that's my recommendation. I think you need to do two things, not just one. What I would recommend that we do is that we allow them to go forward and see if they can unravel this. And then, the second thing is, in the backside of it, is allow us to continue moving forward with the development of the proposal for the stormwater fee, just in case that doesn't work.
Feeling for a 1.7 million?
Actually, I think, what I would say, I don't think you, I don't think, I really think that I...
Because it was just that, that we got the grant for, so we might not have to pay all that.
Well, whatever the number is, the maximum, that's all we're looking at, is the maximum of 1.7 million, paying that back effectively to purchase, however, I'm gonna say the transaction works, but the maximum is really, and I say that we're only, 2.7 million, that as a maximum, we're really looking for not buying, you know, not like buying price of the golf course. We're really looking at that price of what it costs to buy out of the trust.
And the problem, the problem with the golf ownership right now is, as we all know, the dollars it would take to have them convey the golf course to us, you know, because they're looking at it, right or wrong, but they're private property owners, they're entitled to this, they're looking at it as, I'm gonna get X out of developing it, why should I give it to you for Y? I think I'm gonna win in court. So, I mean, that's the problem. Now, we could buy for X right now, if we all want to spend X.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm just saying, right now, though, if they're willing to try to unravel this, because they want to get the property, and if we're really maximum about 1.7 million in reality, or less, you know, maybe less, or 1.7 million includes the repiping to get, you know, off San Antonio or whatever, then, you know, we need to look at both plans and modify what we're doing to the whole house.
I think you have to have a backup plan, quite honestly, just because of learning that that one rule had been repealed, and that the new rule doesn't really include a contraction of the project site in it. So we're relying on our 2004 agreement.
So just to clarify, the 1.7 million, you pay that back at the stormwater fees, and then just do the swap anyway?
That would be, that would be the idea, yes, sir. That would be the idea. Now, from what...
Or, if the developer wants to bet bed, we let him go.
Oh, yeah, and as I said, there may be a portion, maybe a portion, whatever, I get it.
Who knows? They have to find out they can even unravel it.
Right, and that's what I said, but it's one full set, that's, we're only talking about 1.7 million is the top number, and not what X is to outright purchase it, which is conceivably a good...
And that was the thing, the reason, in your staff report that I put in there about the per acre value, was because that 1.7 million was for 158 acres, and we're talking relative. And so, I'm hoping that, what I'm hoping is, is that they would say, yes, you can do it, do it based on, you refund us the 580-some thousand dollars, it's based on the 11,000 per acre. Or, because it was a 60-40 split, we paid $860,000 back in 2002 for this property, so we refund them 60% of that back. You know, so that's what my, my hope is. But I also want to have a backup plan, just in case.
With a backup plan, that all, if that all does, you could still, you know, depending upon whatever X amount it is for the golfers, you could still fund it.
That could still be our decision.
That could still be us to do that. All right, so we got a plan, it's good. Next. There you go.
All right, that's it, that's all I need.
All right, move forward.
Thank you.
March on. Good.
The HOA is aware of this, I believe.
Yes, sir. I, I, actually, I sat down with their leadership and gave them a briefing, so they understand.
All right, anything else?
I have...
Okay, that was it.
All right. Nothing else?
Can I?
No, no, no. Just wait. Just wait. You look good? Monty, anything else?
No, sir.
All righty, seeing none, meeting adjourned.